Good evening and welcome to the town of Emmonsburg Town Meeting for the night of February 5. As we begin our meeting, I kindly requested everyone please silence their cell phones to minimize disruptions in respect to the decorum of our meeting. Um, I'll take a moment as you check your phones now. Additionally, I ask for your cooperation in maintaining a quiet atmosphere during the meeting to ensure that everyone can hear each other. At this time, I ask and invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty unto sinners for all.
Future meetings coming up. We have a Board of Commissioners workshop coming up on February 12th at 7:00 PM here in the Town Office and on Zoom regarding as we try to set priorities for to guide us coming forward with some major projects. We also have the Parks Committee meeting coming up on February 13th, 7:30 in the Town Office. Planning Commission meeting, February 19th, 7:30 Town Office and on Zoom.
Seven, can you change that to seven?
Oh, seven. Seven for planning? Oh, sorry about that. Planning Commission meeting, February 19th at 7:00 PM Town Office and on Zoom. Comprehensive Plan Workshop is February 26th, 7:00 PM Town Office and on Zoom. And a Board of Commissioners meeting coming up March 4th, 7:00 PM Town Office and on Zoom. And I know there was some question about Citizens Advisory that was recanceled because of weather in January or January. It's just going, we're going to pick up for our next scheduled one, which I believe is going to be in April. Okay. From there, we move on to looking at the minutes for lots of them. December 5th, December 12th, December 8th, or I'm sorry, January 8th and January 22nd. Shall we take these one at a time since there's four sets? Yes, okay. After reviewing the minutes from December 5th, are there any changes or modifications that we're hoping to see? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, looking at December 12th, 2023. Any modifications? Or changes that you were hoping to see?
Under call to order, September 11th, 2023 needs to be changed to December 12th, 2023. The minutes for December 12th?
Oh, eight. Oh, I see.
That's all I have for those minutes.
Okay, all right. Any other modifications or changes we're hoping to see? No. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the December 12th meeting minutes as modified?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I think everyone said aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to meeting minutes, January 8th, 2024. Any modifications? Or changes that you're hoping to see commissioners?
I feel that the minutes for January 8th need a little bit more work. I think there's a lot of details that have been left out. If you want a few examples, I can provide those.
I got a quick comment. Staff is trying to please buy people up here and everybody has a different opinion. So when we change them one way, it's not meeting the needs or the desires of somebody else. So I'm not sure how we fix that. Other than, you know, maybe we pick a meeting and each of you would write the minutes as you would like them and see if we can come up with a consensus because it's it's every month that we're going through this. And we got to find a happy medium somewhere.
Um, I agree with that. I think I think that we need to figure out what we value as a board to see in the minutes. And we should have comment from all commissioners about what you want, what you don't want, what it is, what you don't, what you don't want to see and such. Is this something that we can add to our priorities just so that we can all be on the same page and actually have that discussion as a group so that we we don't go through it every month?
I think that's a good idea and I'm not, nobody is right or wrong. I'm not, I don't want to say that. It's just everybody has a different preference and you know, it's almost like trying to satisfy five wives, you know? You know, I don't know if it's possible or not.
I, I, I agree. And I also think you know, it is the commissioners meetings that we do want our commissioners to feel like there is an accurate representation without it being a transcript. So what does that entail without going into transcript, but also accurately capturing the main points without rehashing everything tonight? I just think it's worth a larger discussion. Commissioners, I'm looking for feedback on that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Sure, thank you. The guidance I've received when talking to the Maryland Municipal League, they said that our basic requirement is that we identify what decisions, decisions were made in the meeting. And I know that we've satisfied that. Commissioner, I don't know what specifically you're looking to modify. So could you characterize what you're hoping to see like, like the decision-making process that people are using or what is it that you're hoping to add that would enhance the minutes? So I just want to hear what you, what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so our code says that taking of minutes to ensure that a full and accurate account of the proceedings of the Board of Commissioners have been made. As the minutes stand, it's not a full and accurate account of the proceedings. Um, you know, there's, when we talk about action items, you know, we don't put action items in our minutes. So there's often no follow-up to those action items. The conversation, we include what citizens say, we include what commissioners say. But on important, on important agenda items, we only talk about the staff's presentation and the vote. But if we expressed any concerns either for or against the agenda item, those aren't reflected in the report. You know, there, we record the commissioner comments, but there were commissioner comments that were missing. You had made some comments that were missing. The mayor had made some comments that were missing. So we have to be careful. I think it's, I think if we're going to be transparent about the business that we conduct here, then our minutes should reflect what we discussed.
So the question I have therefore is, how are you defining proceedings just for the sake of clarity? Because I think in my view, that's where it falls to where if we were to look at the notion of proceedings, it's process. That's kind of what I'm digging in on. Now, the other side of it is more often than not, as I understand it, we have a digital recording or a video recording or an audio recording of the meeting. And therefore this is sort of a cross reference. So that is the capture. And this is not necessarily the perfect chronology, but a point of reference where we could have a jumping off point into a recorded document. So this is sort of, for lack of a better term, a lesser quality index, rather table of contents. And from there we jump into the recordings. And again, when we don't have them, you're right, there could be an issue with that.
Um, but this is our record. So if I want to go back and look at the minutes to reflect on that meeting, if I want to see a true account, I'm going to what? Watch a three-hour YouTube video?
We could, you could, you know, there are buttons, you fast forward, you rewind. I'm a big fan of that.
I mean, if you look at other municipalities, I mean, they include a lot more, if you look at Thermont Minutes, they include a lot more detail. At least even just a summary bullet points of the discussion. Um, you know, that would determine how we arrived at that, you know, decision. Um, I just think I just think there's a lot of information that's missing from our report and what's missing is the commissioner's discussion of the agenda item.
Again, I'd follow the recordings for that. Should they, you know, assuming they're in place. The other piece that I get concerned about, and that's not, this is not on you. So I hope you don't feel that way. But it's the staff that we have and the capacity that they have with what we're asking them to achieve. It can be a struggle in that there few actors being asked to play different parts in a big play. And I don't know that they can do that. And then we have the recordings, I think the recordings are that fallback position. Speaking to what you'd said about the burden of finding something in the follow-up. There are two parts on that. Oftentimes the items that are brought forward in the meeting in the agenda are sponsored by we, the commissioners, and therefore it's our obligation to follow through on those. So if the board votes in favor, you have four people in favor and one person against, then the staff has to take action. Okay, so there's that follow-up and we all have to make sure the staff follows up on it regardless as to how we voted in that vote. But on the other side, if it's a discussion item and we knock it around and everyone's saying, well, I feel this way, I feel that way. It's the burden of the sponsor or sponsors to see it through. Staff, yes, they do have a voice in that for sure, but part of that burden falls on us to execute what we're seeking. And you know, hopefully we're successful and if we're not, then you know, we move forward. But I really think the recordings are what, what drives the, the record.
Well, I know that Zoom can record a transcript. They written, it records a typed transcript as the meeting is progressing. Are we in fact using that transcript feature?
Now, Town Clerk sits and listens to and watches the meetings from start to finish and transcribes the minutes that way.
Because I've used the transcription feature at work through Zoom and it is fantastic. It basically types on your screen as the meeting is proceeding, all of the comments. So then that would be a much simpler way to go back and you know, try to piece minutes together. Because we're all kind of doing the same thing. We're all re-watching the meeting. Because if I'm sitting here having a discussion about agenda item, I'm not necessarily taking notes. So if it doesn't then transmit to the minutes, then I'm going to have to go back and watch the meeting to see what was it that we discussed, what did, you know, what did we decide on?
It's, it sounds like to me too, it's a, what you're describing, Commissioner Turnquist. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's an efficiency productivity thing, like can you then search and find what you need? Like why was that decision made? What was the rationale behind it? Because sometimes we're still asking, why was that done? I mean, luckily we have Commissioner Hoover here that we can grill on those prior things for some of the things, but I think what I'm hearing you say if there was, if that transcript feature was utilized and it was digital, you could do like a control F to find and search different things and quicker than it would be to try to locate it in a YouTube video?
Yeah, oh, definitely. That would definitely help.
So we have several opinions. We turn to, it looks like you would like to say something.
Well, I just stood up because I thought maybe I could be helpful. And I guess I would also just point out that one of the things that I added to the rules of procedure was a bit about what to include in the minutes. Now that was just the bare bones as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, what the law requires, right? The state code says three things. It's, you know, what was discussed, what the votes were and what the actual decision made was. And I agree, I have also looked at Thermont. Thermont does include some additional information. Other municipalities include additional information. There's certainly nothing precluding you from including additional information. But the, I guess, the thing that, well, two things. One, if you want me to sit down and we can have this conversation when we're actually going through the rules, happy to do that. But the, the second thing, I guess two things I would add on adding more information. The more information that gets added, the more sort of disagreement we might have about how to characterize that information, what was actually said, things like that, which again is we're, we're spending time during the meeting trying to sort that all out. And if you add one commissioner's comment, you forget another commissioner's comment, things like that, you know, that, that takes more time. When again, we do have a, a recorded record of all this information. And the second thing I would just point out is in terms of things that matter, looking back, what matters is what was actually decided and what was actually done. And that is already has to be included under the state code, right? It's, it's the votes and the decisions. So while there are certain situations, while maybe the path that was taken to get there might have some relevance later, that's usually not the case. What really matters is what was actually achieved, what the board actually decided, what instructions they actually gave. And so to the extent that the minutes reflects that, and they should, in my opinion, that's sort of the value that they're adding to the conversation in light of the fact that there is a, a recording that granted is sometimes cumbersome to go back through and find the exact point you're looking for maybe, but it is available and it does exist. So.
Thank you for that input. I mean, I know according to, to the laws, what we have to include. And if we, if we just do that, it would be very, very short. So, but you can see in the minutes, we do take some leeway, we always have. So I think it's a matter of coming together as a commission and figuring out what we value so that we don't have to drag staff through it every month. There's got to be a way that's better for productivity and efficiency, hopefully even for our town staff and for us. It's just a matter of trying to make both sides easier, more efficient. I'm sorry, Commissioner Sweeney?
I, I don't have a problem. I mean, the minutes have been done different through the years. The way they're going now is, is pretty good. I do like more of the information that we're getting that the mayor gives to us, you know, beforehand, that's different. But if we include every single word and then if you want to transcript this, as I guess you would like to have, then we'd have a big stack of.
I, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Turnquist, I don't want to speak for you. I don't think she's asking for a transcript. I think she's asking for if, if one side is going to be presented, then the other side should have the same amount of real estate. So, because I don't want to get into the weeds, but I think we can, we can flush it out at another time. That's not this meeting. If we can agree, or do we agree as a council, it's something we want to bring back to the table to discuss maybe during our priorities? I don't know. Feedback?
I would suggest, as per the mayor brought up in, in respect to Commissioner Turnquist's thoughts, it should be something we bring back. I don't know if it's a priority thing and then I think our priorities is related to the, the year and what we anticipate for our overall, like global goals. I think for proceedings, maybe the following meeting, like in a monthly meeting, we talk about process related to, you know, what we'd like to see and how we'd like to see it. And that way we can come back with, you know, what are, prior to the meeting, we could put forward what our hopes are specifically. And that way we can reflect on one another's prior to the meeting. We can come back, look at it and then make some decisions.
Yeah. And that's why I was thinking if we brought it up at one of the workshops, we could kind of get to the meat of the matter. So without, you know, not that, you know, they're invited to come to that too, but so we don't have to hash through what do minutes look like? Other commissioners thoughts? Where would you, if anything?
I think you're right. It's to make it an agenda item on whether it be a workshop or whether it be at a future meeting. And then if you want to have a detailed discussion, like it may all be more appropriate time to do it at that time and have what is the expectation or the desire or whatever you want to call it.
Ms. Willis, looking at our upcoming workshop and our March meeting, do we, what does it look like as far as packing in those items?
So March is very packed, very, very, very packed. I don't think you want to add a lengthy agenda item to that meeting. Your February 12th agenda is the setting priorities for the town. You can have two separate items at that workshop if, if that's how you, what you choose would be my. Okay, Mayor?
We talked about changing that from a workshop to a meeting so we can, we might have some items that need to be voted on.
That's correct.
Just remember that.
Right. Okay. So you're setting priorities. So yes, you could do your setting priorities and you could do your minutes. I think it still would work that way.
How lengthy do we expect? What was going to be a workshop as far as setting priorities and?
Just going to be two things that, that could get, one's going to get added. Which I was going to talk about later, but we're going to need to, to end the closed session for a hiring process. And then the second could be an approval of a contract, correct?
Possibly, possibly a change order or, or a project. So at this point, it's best to make your meeting on Monday, just a regular meeting.
Regular meeting?
Yes, which you could still do your setting priorities as a discussion item.
Or no, it could be an action item.
As long as we have time, I just don't want to.
Commissioners, adding it to February 12th. I, if we do that, I would suggest that maybe you can, we can all bring some thoughts to the table ahead of time so that we could try to expedite the process. How does that sound commissioners? I'm looking, yes.
Good.
Good.
You know, what might be a good project and I keep giving you homework assignments, but if we picked a agenda item from tonight and, and everybody wrote what they think the minutes should look like for that one agenda item. And we could take that and that could kind of be our model. Or could be your model. I'm not giving myself homework.
I can even make the offer to compile the minutes for this meeting for everyone's review and feedback. If that's something you're interested in.
Well, I hate to take away your, your attention from the, from the rest of the agendas.
I'll just watch the, the YouTube video. I mean, that's pretty much what Sabrina has to do. Watch the YouTube video and follow up to fill in the blanks. I'm just throwing that out there.
I mean, I mean, we could certainly go in that direction. I'm just wondering if it would be easier for us to have a model of a section and just really kind of clarify.
That's fine.
Point. But, town staff?
I'm sure Sabrina would not be opposed, but there are other things that, you know, that are, you know, she puts in the minutes. You know, maybe it would be a commissioner minutes and then the staff minutes that we present, and then you have something to compare them both to and see what we include.
Good idea.
Because sometimes there are things that have to be included. For example, the two resolutions that Matty did for grant projects, there's exact language that USDA was looking, I believe it was USDA. No, DHCD was looking for, that had to be in the minutes. So we could do a comparison and that would give you, give you something, compare them to.
Commissioner Hoover?
That would be my recommendation as well. Just go ahead and do staff minutes as you normally do and then you can take the mayor's homework assignment and and create the minutes.
All right, that works for me. Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Sweeney?
So for clarification, we're doing the whole minutes or are we doing one agenda item as an agenda? We write for the minutes.
The only thing I'd say with that being said, the minutes will not be ready by Monday's meeting. We have several projects with bids due this week that are going to take up a lot of time. At the staff level, we won't have ours ready. For, for the 12th.
For the 12th, then, then we should then I don't see the reason why we would continue discussing it if we don't have a way to compare.
Yeah, I just don't see how we can get it done, especially with the absence of one employee.
I agree with you. Get to March meeting for discussion.
March meeting?
That's fine. I mean, we can put our agenda packet together and then if Commissioner Turnquist sends her, so we can, you know, attach that as well or?
That would give us more time to really compare. Commissioner Turnquist?
So we're both preparing minutes for the next, for this meeting, for tonight's meeting or, and then we're sharing that for the next meeting.
For the March meeting.
That, that sounds the best approach.
So we won't be approving minutes at, for this meeting on February 12th? No.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So, sounds fine. Is that agreeable? Does that need to be a motion? Holy goodness. No, okay. All right, um. Moving on with the January 8th meeting minutes. So you're going to postpone. Oh, nevermind, I heard you. Do we want to move forward? Is there a motion to approve January 8th or do we want a table until we have the minutes discussion? Commissioners? Let's just table. Can we table? Let's do that. Let's just move on. Is there a motion? Do I hear, do I have to do that? Is there a motion to table? Do I hear a motion to table January 8th main meeting minutes and January 22nd meeting minutes until March?
And December 12th.
No, I thought we approved December 12th. You did. It was just the two in January that weren't approved. Is there a motion to table January 8th and January 22nd until the March meeting? Oh, moved. Is there a second? Okay. If there's no second, do I hear a motion to approve January 8th meeting minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept January meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I would say any further, just any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All, all against, say nay, nay, nay. Motion carries three to two with Commissioners Turnquist and Bowman-Pallett against. Is there a motion to approve January 22nd meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the January 22nd meeting minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All against, please say nay, nay, nay. Motion carries three to two with Commissioner Turnquist and Bowman against. All right. Um. Okay, I feel like I need a five-minute break. All right, moving on to our police report. Thank you for being patient.
Oh, microphone. Sorry. Five sick days and one other. I'm not sure what that is. All this, all of our staffing is the same. There's no Um, all this, all of our staffing is the same. There's no changes there. Um, myself and DFC Bartholo both had our annual training, which is online. Um, Bartholo got. He was involved with our unit meeting where they did our new gas mask fitting. Our fleet. Our vehicles are still the same. No issues there. We handled 187 calls for service. We had two arrests and 27 traffic stops. That is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Turnquist.
Yeah, I was wondering. So when you write a speeding in town. Do do the funds for that that are received, does it go to the town or does it go to the county?
Uh, they're state citations, so.
So it goes back though.
It would.
Okay.
The town.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner O'Donnell, questions?
Sure, you had shared an email. Do you want to talk about that? Your request related to speeding.
Oh, yes, thank you for remember. Okay, sorry, I got sidetracked. Um. I, we had an email from um, Mr. Davy Cool of um, asking if there was any way that we could ask maybe the sheriff's office if there's data as far as the number of accidents at 140 and track road. Um, or how would we go about getting that information if we just wanted to see if it was a frequent area of concern?
Uh, I can look into that.
Okay.
Provide that later.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
That was 140 and track road, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the town managers' report, Ms. Willis.
Thank you. This is the manager's report for December of 2023. I'll just highlight some uh key areas. Related to streets, uh, staff conducted the monthly storm drain inlet cleaning. They assisted with the annual tree lighting event. Uh, they also installed a new photo cell in the streetlight control box on Warthens Way. Um, they cleaned up some glass on Chesapeake Avenue related to an accident. Uh, in parks, a contractor repaired and replaced some equipment at the all-inclusive playground. And then staff conducted a park inventory, including tables, trash cans, park benches, et cetera. For water, Rainbow Lake was back at the spillway level, which is 16.6 feet. The roughing filters are back to being washed three times a day. I have the list of well depths related to water production. We produced an average of 193,786 gallons per day, and I did not put the correct number in my report here. The amount of backwash water in the month of December was roughly 13.64%. Uh, related to wastewater, we treated an average of 689,032 gallons and consumed 193,786, which meant roughly 71.97% of the wastewater treated in the month of December was wild water. This was due to significant heavy rain. We had no spills of untreated sewage. However, we were above the plant capacity on 14 days. Uh, due to the heavy rain, we had to divert flows to the lagoons. Uh, once the infant flow was okay, we ran the transfer pump to pump down the lagoons. In December, we received about 5.1 inches of precipitation. The average is only 3.3. So at the time of this report, we had a surplus of 0.01 inches over the last six months. Related to trash, uh, trash pickup will remain Mondays during the month of February. Uh, listed in here, some of the meetings that I attended uh in the month of December. Noteworthy items, the LG Sonic was pulled from the lake on December 21st, 2023. Uh, yearly calibrations are completed on the lab scales. The contractor Conawaygo completed the. Pump station bypass. Staff attended a wastewater and sewer data management GIS class. And staff is working on conducting inspections of water meter sizes and IDs at various locations. That's all I have.
Um, thank you. I have two quick questions for you. When you I saw that the climber was replaced at the playground at at the park, was it wear and tear or was it?
It was wear and tear.
Okay, all right, perfect. I wasn't sure if it was like vandalism. Um. Also, just over, is it a request? Is it possible? To have the well levels. From January.
We're still work. I I got with the um, excuse me, the the water and sewer superintendent on on that and he's. Looking through some files and we've got some other questions that we're working on related to wells. So as soon as I have that, I'll. I'll get it in my report.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Turnquist.
Um, yeah, what was your question about the wells? Um, I don't repeat the same question.
Oh, I was just asking for January's levels.
Oh, January levels.
Yes.
Um, you mean that the how deep they actually are? Or do you want just the actual January levels?
Oh, I was just wondering, like, since we have December for the wells, like, if we knew January for the wells.
Yeah, he usually gets me his report. I should have his January report sometime here. We're unfortunately usually about a month behind.
Mm hmm. Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
So it sounds like you're still working on putting the well depth on the report. Is that something you're still? At our January 8th meeting, I had requested that we add the well depth for for wells one through five to the report.
Yeah, I met, like I said, I met with Jared, the water and super superintendent, and we're digging through some old files. Uh, getting the actual well depths and we're also looking at some other information about the wells. So I should have that. Um, my manager's report for January.
Okay, and then in the next bullet at the bottom of page 18.
Yeah.
Um, water production and consumption, we produced an average of 193 gallons, 193,000 gallons. Um, per day, we consumed an average of 193 per day.
My first number is incorrect.
Okay.
I just uh. Type both numbers.
I was wondering how they are both the same.
No, that's um, but you'll see the backwash water is 13.64%. So we're not too far off. But there is a difference.
And then it says finished water plus MSM.
Right, so we no longer have Mount St. Mary's water, so it's just the finished water.
Just the.
That we use to calculate the consumption. Yes.
Take out MSM. Okay, and then. And there says staff turned off well number five. I was just wondering if there was a reason.
Yeah, because we were getting good because the lake was back at the spillway level. So we were able to increase the amount of water that we got from the lake. So we we turned off one well.
And then I was wondering, maybe at a future meeting, um, maybe we could discuss the water and sewer report and how the data is reflected. Um, for instance, you know, we're comparing our well levels in December. For the optimal level, which was in May 2011. But if our report was like year to date or January through December of the previous year with our well levels. We could see how our wells, whether they're trending up or down. In terms of, you know, our depth and our water consumption and so on and so forth. But that's something we can talk about in the future.
So they chose and and uh. Former Mayor Hoover might be able to to explain why they chose May 2011, but at the time that was determined as the optimum level. Where they were going to begin using comparisons on all our wells.
Just the album because of rainy season.
Yeah.
That's all.
So that's why we use that date.
No, I think the May 2011 data is great, but if we had like the year to look at, we could see if our levels are going up and down.
Okay.
Have some sort of, you know.
You mean like from December of 23 compared to December of 22?
No, if our report just said January well depth, February well depth, March well depth. We can, we can look at one page, one line item with our numbers and we can gauge very quickly.
Oh, I get.
Are we trending up or are we trending down with our our well?
So you're looking at like a a table and it and just another column would be filled in each.
Yeah.
Time. Okay.
Yeah, and we already have the data from previous reports, but like I said, maybe we can talk about that at a future meeting.
Okay, I'm I'm glad I clarified. I understand. What you what you're thinking.
Um, thanks.
Um, other comments, Commissioners? Uh, just a quick question. Where are we with Mount St. Mary's and getting their water back online?
I think the the mayor had a few meetings with the president.
Yeah, they're still under design phase to to get a new plant and plus they're looking for. Uh, new water sources. Uh, they're they're real anxious to get us get back online, but. And their water is, does meet MDE standards. It just didn't meet ours, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, um. Hearing no other questions or concerns, we can now move on. To. Commissioner comments. No, sorry, town planners report.
Um, I'll just add for you, we had a discussion about the grants administrator report. As we all know, Matty's out on maternity leave. There has not been any. Movement really on any of our grants. Um, so the report was not included this month. We should have it back in next month.
Thank you. Um, turning it over to you.
Good evening. This is the town plan's report. Um, in the month of January, we processed only one zoning permit for renovation. Um, some development update updates include um. The Seton Village subdivision, um, applicant is seeking planning commission approval of a subdivision plat uh to convert to conduct condominium. It units into two recorded lots, so they've had to do a forest elimination and forest conservation on the subdivision plat. And those are under review. Uh, it'll be on the planning commission's agenda this month. Um, Quest Community Church, um, the applicant has resubmitted a site plan for review. Um, and staff has provided additional comments for the applicants to applicant to address. Um, and then for Mount St. Mary's University's um ewing improvements at the Darts of Charities um. Uh, property, uh, the planning commission conditionally approved the uh plans and staff has provided additional comments for the applicant to address. Um, some in in development pipeline, um, town staff met with DRB group. To give them information about the application process. So subdivision and site plan and improvement plan, et cetera. Um, for stormwater management, I'll highlight that uh working on a timeline for them as for activities to meet all the state requirements. Um. The planning commission met uh on January 23rd and will be meeting again. Um. See, it's misery this uh February 19th, as mentioned earlier. There's a typo there. Um, there there will be a board of appeals meeting tomorrow to um. Uh, for the for the applicant who's requesting a special exception approval from BOA. Our Board of Appeals to establish a private school in the IPed zoning district. And public hearing notice has been provided. Um, under grants, uh, the community legacy uh grant is being administered. So far we have six, actually eight as of today. Um, uh, applications from property owners. And uh, we're looking to set a date for the sustainable communities work group to meet. Um, one correction to be made is the keep you Maryland beautiful um. Grant that hasn't been awarded. So the application has, we we will find out this or next month. Whether we're awarded or not. And for the company's the plan, uh, it's it's in progress. There's maps and charts being uh created. Public input is being incorporated. And um, there we're still uh conducting surveys um online and um, we've had. Uh, one public workshop meeting this this month or last month. Um, and it focused on economic development. Um, it involved us after presentation and and an exercise and discuss um. The future economic development of Emmitsburg. Um, and then we have two upcoming workshops um related to um. Uh, community development and environmental um sustainability. And I've listed the meetings attended uh in the month of month of January.
Thank you, and I see that you added the the grants on to that section. That was really helpful. Thank you for doing that. Um, any questions from Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell?
So the most obvious one, I've gotten a lot of questions about the timeline for the buildout of the distillery. Um, any guesstimate regarding that?
No, no guesstimate. We're still awaiting, um, you know, an an updated improvement plan from the applicant, so.
Is it fair to say this it's uh, that's also correct for federal stones built out? Because that was the second group of questions I've received.
Um, Federal Stone will be done before the distillery most likely, but because they're in the construction phase already, so. Um, we're much more further out with the distillery, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Nope, okay, thank you. All right, now we can move on to Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, um. I was able to attend the county executives budget listening session last weekend. Uh, attending were County Commissioners Kemp, uh, County Commission President Young and um. County Commissioner Mason Carter uh representing ourselves. Uh, it was well attended. The mayor was there as well, and I feel that uh. The executive is very serious about hearing our input and the community's input and the window is still open. Uh, I believe there's one more listening session, but also we're one to contact the executive by email. Uh, I believe they would still be very receptive if you have concerns or priorities that you want to share with them. Let's see, there will be a Parks and Rec meeting on the 13th. That is next week on Tuesday. Um, I hope his members and some prospective members are able to make it. Uh, there's been an interest in that as well. Um, I was pleased to hear about the park inventory and at a future time, maybe I could bring that back to a Parks and Rec meeting just to share the. Uh, what we have and what's in our purview. Um, finally, I'm kind of excited. I was invited to Washington DC to REI to speak about the Emmitsburg Trails to a group in the District of Columbia. And that will happen this Saturday, so that's what I can share. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Turquest.
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney.
Um. I don't have anything, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover.
Just one request. The staff can contact the guest Allegheny Power and see about getting a street light repaired on West Main Street across from A12.
Yes.
Thank you.
Street light, it's out or?
It's out.
It's out, okay.
Okay. Um, I just have a few things. Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Um, first of all, I, from what I understand from our town uh staff, we have several committees that have openings. Um, Commissioner O'Donnell, did you say that you had openings on Parks and Rec? Okay, so we have, if you're interested, Parks and Rec, the Sustainable Communities Workshop Group. I believe Citizens Advisory has openings, so there's lots of places for you to be um active within our community. If you're interested, please contact town staff. Um, I also wanted to give a shout out to town um staff. I don't suggest somewhere. Uh, the amount of posting for our meetings and workshops has been fabulous on Facebook. Thank you for doing that. Um, and I did have. A resident of Southgate contacted me about the flooding at South Seton and Cedar. Especially in light of the heavy rain, so I was going to mention that later on as something that we could bring up as maybe. To look at for one of our priorities to have that fixed. We did have a water rescue as it was. Um, with that last heavy rain at that intersection, so there was some concern there. And that is all. Um, moving on to Mayor's comments, Mayor Davis.
Okay, I'll try to make this pretty quick, but I just want to uh to to thank uh Kadim Brim. Kadim was our code enforcer. He is uh moving on to bigger and better things. But uh, when Kadim came here about a year ago, he had a really tough job to get out into the community and uh. Uh, regain the respect of of his position with the citizens and he did an outstanding job with that. So we just want to thank him for for what he did there. And uh, we're conducting interviews at this time to to fill his position, so. Um, there's going to be a lot of activities going on uh in the next couple of months with the streetlights, parking meters. Uh, we have all kinds of bid openings for construction projects, so there's going to be a whole lot going on, so stand by for more details. Um. Unfortunately, we we received another unfunded mandate from uh the Maryland Department of Environment for a um inspection of the spillway at Rainbow Lake. So that uh, that includes hiring an engineer to uh to.
So that that includes hiring an engineer to to do the inspection and then to. Fulfill any shortfalls that we have, which we we do know that we have some. They. They did point a few of them out, but they wouldn't do the inspection. Of course, we have to hire an engineer to to do all that. So that's another one of those unfunded thing that's going to end up coming out of our water budget that we we just, there's no way to plan for that. You don't know what they're going to do and. What they're going to send at you, but we we just got that. Last week I was fortunate enough to meet with the county executive and two of her senior staff people. Kind of as a meet and greet so we could get to to know each other. I'm sure she won't forget me. Because I did talk about stormwater management. And she is, she is willing to to send staff to meet with Carroll County to see how they run their stormwater management program. And hopefully that'll be the beginning of taking a little bit of this burden off of our staff. She seemed very open to it and she promised me they would look into it, so. Just the last thing. Julia talked about the the comprehensive plan. Staff is putting a great amount of work into that and I I beg. The community to get involved with that. I mean, this is the future of the town and. I know we'll have a whole bunch of people come after it's approved and say, why did you do that? But we we need to have you here now. And I I learned a lot setting in on the last workshop. So please, please, if you have some some free time, please come come and help us with that. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will be moving on to public comment. We have three signed up for public comments. When your name is called, please come to the podium, press the button on the microphone so it lights up red. And state your name and if you are a resident within town limits or not, no need to disclose your actual address. And you will have four minutes to speak and you can use the. Timer in front of you to help gauge your time. And first we have Mr. Eric Sloan.
Eric Sloan, I live here in town. One of the things is we're getting new streetlights in and new parking meters. Has the thought been put up to selling off the old ones? Because, you know, you put a parking meter in your backyard and. You know, use it for a ring toss or. The birds to play on. And as far as the lights, if if the body of the light is salvageable, you could stick new guts in it. You know, put it in front of your house, put it in your backyard, throw it in your basement, whatever. And the other thing is like, you know, they brought, you know, the. The what are we going to do over the next several years, the plans as having. An open meeting probably on a Saturday where people can come get their four minutes of fame and glory. Put out what they want to do, what they're looking for. And, you know, not necessarily a set of agendas that they would have to adhere to, but four minutes to speak their mind, you know, what they want. You know, because we all want to avoid like with stormwater. Eloquent City years ago said, housing is great. Let's build this stuff across the other side of seventy. Every time they get a heavy rain, what used to be forested area. Floods right through the guts of Eloquent City and turns the old part of town into a raging stormwater. But it'd give everybody a chance to say what they want to say, listen and hopefully get people out from behind their TV sets and into the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Mr. Jack Weller.
Yeah, I'm Jack Weller. I have a couple of things I wanted to say here. First of all, I hated Steve Valera go out of business. I don't know if they were getting water from the town or they're polluted into town, but I like those guys and we went up there. We went there a lot. Pretty close to where we live. That's the first thing. The second thing is the. Why is Anadale Road closed tonight? Yeah, it's it's closed at the crazy corner there. I mean.
No.
You don't know? Okay, I just wondered.
No idea. I thought it could be, and I'm not one hundred percent sure of this. I know there is a construction project that is in the offing there. Related to the flooding that closes it. And I'm wondering if this is part of that. The reason I I'm hypothesizing this is because. I've recently seen markings and flagging in the low area. So pure hypothetical, but that's a best guess.
Okay.
So, sorry, that's, we can look into that.
I I do have something I can share with that if you allow me to. We did contact the the county highway the last week after the second flooding. They have to bring the 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 concrete barricades up now because people go around the the wooden ones and we. Still continue to have water rescues and and things there. So in order to to do that, they need to bring up. A heavy piece of equipment. The town has offered our backhoe. To make those moves for them so they can get the road open much quicker. Because they're bringing a piece of equipment either out of the other side of Thurmond or Frederick to come up. So we did offer to do that. And also talking with one of the lead people in the roads department. They know what to do to fix it. Maryland Department of Environment will not give them permission to do that. So it's a state issue which I have, I'm reaching out to our county delegates and our county senator. To see what we can do about that. So they know what they have to do to fix it. MDA MD won't give them the permits to do it. So that's, that's the issue. The county's on it. We're on it. We're trying to help, but we're being held up by the state.
Right. Thank you. The other que- that's not a question, it's a comment. I don't know if you read the free paper we get and it's talked about, front page about Tony Town, their government. And what a problem they're having with. Their, the whole process evidently. And I would just hope this would never happen here. And it just seems like it's surprising. It takes thirty minutes. This meeting here to get through just the minutes. I mean, the minute should be automatic. I mean, I've been in a lot of meetings when I worked at the mount and. It never had a trouble with the minutes. That was, that was like, yeah, you pass it. So anyway, that's that's that comment. And then the last thing I had was the logging. Is there any logging going on this year and where is it if there is?
There's not.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Donald Sun.
Donald Sun, non-resident. Would like to ask the board if there was a way they could, somebody look into the code. In regards to the various groups that meet, the CAC. Being one of them, for non-residents being members. I know that's currently not permitted under the code, town code, and I'd like to see if there was an amendment. Or something could be done about that. I'd like to belong to one or more of them and cannot, I mean, I can attend. As a, as anyone can, but I'd like to see if there's something could be done about that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes public comment. So we are moving on to administrative business. Item number one, discussion related to advertising town events and meetings. This was something I had brought up. I don't, I don't have anything official because the more I thought about this, I don't think there's a need to have an actual statement. It was just a matter. Of, you know, having the consiste- consistency on town meetings and workshops and events. Posted in all the wonderful places that we have to crosspost, whether it's Facebook and our town calendar events and Channel ninety nine. Jess, you've been doing a fabulous job. You've, I've been seeing those come fast and furious. Thank you for that. And there was, you know, maybe a suggestion if we could add. I don't, I don't know, I'm not Facebook savvy as far as this goes, but is it possible to make. A town meeting or a workshop an event so that people can click interested and then it comes up as a reminder. On their calendar in hopes to. I I'm not expecting you to answer. These are just some ideas that I had in mind, but. Originally, I was thinking I'd come to this, the, oh, so we'll advertise town meetings so many times, workshops so many times. But really, that has been really beefed up and I appreciate that. So it's just to make sure that those are crossposted on, I'm sure, I'm sure you are. Channel ninety nine in our. Town website and our town calendar. Commissioner Turquest, I saw you reaching for your microphone. Oh, I'm sorry. So. Putting out anything in an exact guideline isn't, I think will kind of bite everybody in the behind. I don't want this to be punitive. It's just a matter of, you know, let's make use of all of our channels and maybe adding those as events. That's all I had. Are there any additional comments or suggestions? Okay, well, that was fun. All right, thank you. Moving on. To our consent agenda. No, wait. I'm sorry. You're right, okay. Consent agenda, number one. For consideration, appointment of Dale Scherer as a full member of the planning commission effective February twentieth. Twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept Dale Sheridan as a full-time member to planning commission effective February twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five to zero. All right, that's all we have for consent agenda. So now we're moving on to our treasurer's report. Commissioner Turquest.
Yes, the treasurer's report for as of January thirty first, I'll just hit the highlights. I think we're still trying to work on this. To kind of fine tune it. Our cash balance as of January first, twenty twenty four is ten million, seven hundred and twenty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars. We had deposits totaling six hundred and ninety four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Withdrawals, uh, four hundred and ninety four thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars. And operating balance forward, ten million, nine hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars. We've broken this out a little bit into categories, the general fund, two point one million. Capital projects, five hundred and seventy three thousand. Our water budget, three hundred and forty three thousand. ARPA money, which has been set aside for projects, two point eight million. And sewer, four point eight million. And that is all.
Any questions regarding the treasurer's report? No. Okay, thank you. We are moving on to, is there any need for the planning commission report? Yes, okay, Commissioner Turquest.
Just a few comments. At our last meeting, we elected new officers. Kevin Hagan was elected as the chair. Patricia Galloway is the new vice chair. Dan Garnets will continue as the secretary. We did discuss, and I think Najila may have mentioned this, the planning commission rules of procedure, and there was a question. So they want their own rules of procedure updated as we've, we're working on updating ours. And I had mentioned that maybe they should look at ours as a general starting point or jumping off point. And they were wondering if the board of commissioners will need to approve. Nope, okay.
They're an independent party.
Correct.
So we're good there.
And that is all for the planning commission report.
Thank you. Any questions? Or Commissioner Turquest? Okay, moving on. To our agenda items, number one, for consideration. Move the home department of the following positions, and we had it broken down into three. Office Coordinator from Department forty, which is Water Fund, to Department thirteen, Financial. Town Clerk from Department fifty, which is Sewer, to Department ten, which is Legislative. And Town Manager from Department fifty, which is Sewer, to Department ten, which is Legislative. Uh, open for discussion on any of these items, commissioners? Or actually, I should probably turn to Ms. Willetts. Sorry about that.
Sure. So you'll see the chat, the, excuse me, the chart in front of you on page thirty one. It outlines the staff member. And there, so each. Your salary follows you through where your time is spent. There are certain things that are allocated solely to your home department. And those things are your health insurance, your pension and your taxes, which FICA, unemployment and workers' comp. And so in this chart, you'll see the related expenses for each employee. That we're discussing tonight. And then the final column would be the total amount that would be estimated amount because things do fluctuate throughout the year. Taxes and such, but that's the estimated amount that would be moved from one budget or one department to the other. And the reason, as we talked before, the reason this has to be a board, because it affects more than five percent of that department's budget.
Thank you. Discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Hoover?
Yes, so I think is, this is something we've already discussed at our previous meeting. About moving. These particular three employees to their their benefit package and their taxes to their home departments, so. If we know the discussion, I'll make a motion for it.
Is there?
The one thing I should have added, one thing note that I didn't put in here is that this, all these, this money then will be taken out of your general fund. So then your general fund is going to have about ninety six thousand, ninety seven thousand dollars less. In your general fund come next fiscal year.
I was just going to ask for a second so we could move for towards discussion. Is there a second on Commissioner? No?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, there was no. You didn't make a motion, never mind. I could have sworn you made a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Further discussion, other commissioners?
I'll make a motion to move the three employees as noted here to their, to have their benefits, the health insurance and taxes moved to their home department.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Will be this fiscal year or next?
Uh, we can do it effective. The next pay period. Which would be. Next week, the twelfth. I don't know why I'm looking at you.
I didn't know we got paid, no?
So the pay period ends February eleventh. So it would be effective February twelfth.
Okay, perfect.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Okay. I guess we can take this as a package then. Or do we do them individually?
Motions for all of them.
Motions for all of them.
Motions for all of them.
Thank you. Second, all, how do I say this? All in favor of moving the three positions. To the new departments as stated. Please say aye.
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 Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item number two, for consideration, approval of the pump station dedication agreement with rudders. We turn to Ms. Willetts.
Okay, so this is the dedication agreement between the town and rudders. I'll just highlight some of the areas. Basically, to summarize it, rudders created or constructed a pump station at their location. They were responsible for all the construction and maintenance up until till this is approved. The board approved a public works agreement with, between, with rudders on June fourth, twenty twenty-one. And it basically said that rudders would construct the necessary water and sewer lines, pump station, and force main. And here and after referred to as facilities. The plans for this facilities have been approved by the town. The owner has constructed the facilities at its own expense. The facilities have been inspected and approved on August ninth, twenty twenty-three by Fox and Associate, Associates, which was the rudders engineer, and accepted on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three by the Department of Environment, Maryland Department of Environment. By execution of this agreement, the owner does hereby convey title to said facilities to the town, free and clear of all liens, encumbrances, and does further agree that it will execute any and all deeds necessary to convey to the town, all easements for lines that now exist. The owner agrees to supply the town all available information concerning the testing and operation of the facilities, water warranties concerning the equipment in connection with this agreement. And finally, the owner agrees to assign the town any and all transferable warranties relating to the facility. Owner further agrees that all workmanship is warranted by the owner for a period of one year from the date of completion, which was June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Turnquist?
Um, is this, is, do we handle all new construction this way? They build the the lines and the pump station, and then we transfer it back to the town. Is that typical of how we handle it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then on page two, it says that the town shall be entitled to collect all fees for the operation of the facilities. I guess that would be moving forward. What are the fees that the town collects? It's, um, page thirty-four, item number four.
I don't believe there are any fees that we'll be collecting from, from. The fees would be the su, any sewage, sewer. So it'd be their water and sewer bill. But there's no fees associated with the actual pump station.
There's no front foot assessment or anything?
No, there was not.
That would be the only fee I think we get.
So is it safe to assume therefore it's future income related to the use of this, such as like you had said, sorry, the water bill and, sorry, water billing and wastewater?
Yes. And, and if you, if you recall, this pump station was designed with a bigger capacity for future development across the street.
And that's, that's the big thing. I think that not only is it going to serve the rudders' need, but it's going to be able to give us the opportunity if someone chooses to cite something there. It can come back to the town and that infrastructure is already in place. That's a big boon to the town.
Right, right. No, I don't argue that. But does, does the, uh, language need to be modified from a legal standpoint? Since it says the town shall be entitled to collect all fees of any nature for the operation of the facility?
No, just the extent that that facility is now incorporated within the larger system that the town operates and fills for. That's all that covers. I don't see any need to modify that language.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the pump station dedication agreement with rudders? As presented?
I make a motion to accept the motion as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, excuse me. Um, I make a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Pardon me.
Do I need to do another second for that? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All against, say nay. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three. Approval of the three-year contract with EOS for maintenance of Silo Hill Stormwater Basin as required by the MS four permit. Nagila?
Sure. Uh, so the purpose of this contract is to make sure that maintenance of, um, Silo Hill Basin is in place. So the IJ grant that, that's been put in the planner's report from DNR dated, um, November fifteen, twenty twenty-three is a modification to a previous MOU to add extra funds towards maintenance of Silo Hill, um, Stormwater Basin. So the total being awarded through this grant is two hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars, which includes up to eighty, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty for maintenance. And this will cover the town for the next three years if we hire EOS. So this contract was drafted by EOS and reviewed thoroughly by the town attorney. And, uh, like I said, the cost will, of this contract will be covered by the IJ grant. So it'll be eleven, um, thousand, five hundred seventy-eight for this year, and then that comes out to about thirty-five thousand-ish for the next three years. And there's enough money in the grant, um, to cover this item. So the staff requests approval to make sure this maintenance program is, is, uh, in place because it's part of MS four requirements.
Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hoover?
Do that one. So this is a, so we have a grant to do three years, I guess. After the three years, then, I guess we, we're trying to apply for a grant maybe, but if we don't get that, then it comes out of the operating budget, I guess.
So, uh, the stormwater utility fees that'll go into effect, um, July of this year. It's been on pause, um, since last year, and it'll go on, go, go into effect. And that should, um, be enough, more than enough to fund one year's worth of
Stormwater utility fee.
Right.
Yeah, what is, explain that for me.
Oh, yeah, sure. It's, sorry. Um, it's basically, basically, um, a fee collected from the amount of impervious surface that each property has, and it's built into their water and sewer bill. Well, it will be once it's, yeah, goes into effect. So whatever is collected from there would be, would have to be used towards, um, some sort of some stormwater best management practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Comments? Okay. Hearing none, is there, um, a motion to approve the three-year contract with EOS for the maintenance of Silo Hill Stormwater Basin as required by the MS four permit?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item number four, which is for consideration, approval of the updated rules of procedures of the Board of Commissioners meeting to include provisions for closed session and workshops. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Adams. Uh, he's the one that prepared the document.
And I'm already at the podium, so I'm just going to stay here. So you should have a red line version as well as a clean version behind it. The main intent of this revision was one to account for the addition of workshops. There was also a request to include information on the closed sessions under the Open Meetings Act. So those are the two major areas that I focused on, but I also went through and added things throughout. One, just trying to catch typos and the like. And two, trying to make this as useful as possible for the running of these meetings. Things that might exist in various locations, trying to bring them all together in a single document and try to make it step by step as possible, just to try to, um, help things run smoothly. So I will just go through and hit the highlights of things that I've changed, um, that I believe are substantive. I'm not going to go through and call out every single typo that I changed. First, I'll start section two point five. Um, adding the option for an agenda item to be removed if the relevant member of the public requests that it be withdrawn. I'm thinking specifically, you know, we just went through the contract with Chantel. If for some reason Chantel was unable to be here to present their package or, or something, and they wanted to request that it be moved, I wanted to provide a mechanism for that to formally happen. Moving on to, well, let's go to section three point four. I'll just flag this because we, we've already talked about the minutes at length tonight. As I mentioned at the top, I do have included here what the state law requires minutes include. I don't think that if you were to accept my proposed rules as written, it would preclude you from having the conversation you want to have later about adding more detail. Because again, this is just the, this is the threshold anyway. You can add to it as you wish. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that you need to, you know, worry about holding off on that. Based on that pending conversation, but certainly that's your prerogative. In section three, I spent some time, um, drawing, drawing out a little bit more clearly the distinction between a regular and a special meeting. Um, again, in my, the rules contemplate that the regular meeting is the meeting that must happen once a month to transact business. Special meeting being any additional meetings that the board adds to transact business as opposed to a workshop, which is the meeting that we're adding that will not take public comment, no action taken. So just clarifying that in some places here. Also clarifying in three point seven, the, the public comment, rules that you already implement, but just making them more clear. And then in section three point ten, I went through and I added, and this is all coming from Robert's rules. This is not groundbreaking things that I pulled out of my head, but this is just setting through the motions process, the various sub-motions that can be made and how things are to proceed. Again, idea just being to try to have one document that we can all look at to say, okay, let's do this now. In section four, public hearings, this did, uh, receive a little additional attention and primarily to draw the distinction between a legislative public hearing and a quasi judicial public hearing. The reason that import, that distinction is important is because a quasi judicial public hearing has to include certain due process protections. It's, it's basically like court proceeding. So you want to give people, you know, their due process protections. Now, as the Board of Commissioners, you're not going to run into too many quasi judicial public hearings. And one of the reasons I went through and drew this distinction is, um, you know, the way that we proceeded with, say, the Chantel hearing. There were some things in there that didn't necessarily need to be, because really the purpose of the Chantel hearing was for you to hear additional feedback in a more formal setting from town residents about this big decision that you're going to make. And that's going to be true of many of the public hearing required decisions that the board has to make. So, um, trying to just draw a line of demarcation there between when you really do have to provide things like cross-examination, um, public testimony, things like that. So that was my intent behind the revisions to section four. Section five is addressing the workshop issue that, that the board asked to be addressed. Again, the highlights are workshop. No action taken, no public comment received. Don't need a quorum, don't need minutes, because again, there's no action being taken. It really is just an opportunity to discuss in a more informal environment. Contemplated actions. And then section six, again, this is, this is not groundbreaking information. This is just the Open Meetings Act requirement for closing a meeting. I tracked the language of the statute as best as I could. Um, I also included a sample closing statement at the end. Again, the state's AG's office has some great resources on the Open Meetings Act. I didn't reinvent the wheel. Took a lot of what they already had. The sample closing statement is an adapted sample that they provide. So, um, again, this is, the, the hope here is that it's just easier to have it all in one place and easier to follow. And if I didn't make something clear and I can make it more clear, I'm happy to do that because the purpose is to make this a helpful tool. So that's what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
Okay, questions? Counsel? Commissioner O'Donnell?
A procedural thing, especially with the closed session. If it were possible, could you provide the script in this document for both moving from the board open session to the closed session and also the script for ending the closed session?
I could.
And I, I think the value of that is the burden falls to staff every time to come forward. Hey, here's the document. Hey, here's the document. Sometimes I think it's been, it's fallen on your shoulders too. And I think if we have something in place that's set, it will abide by, you know, will be abiding by the law, of course. And also there's a, uh, a utility to it.
Sure, I, I'm happy to do that. I, I understand the additional steps that I think you're referring to, and it can be done, definitely.
Do you by any chance know after closed session, do we have to come back to an open meeting and announce the results of that closed session?
You do not. The results of a closed session end up in the minutes. The, the law says of the next open meeting. Now, if you, so let's use an example. If you have a closed session next week to discuss an employment matter, under the state law, the results of that meeting wouldn't have to appear in the minutes for the March town meeting. Now, you could provide them with the minutes for the February twelfth meeting if they're ready in time. But that's just, that's the outside boundary the state law sets. Um, and again, it's just topics discussed. Who was there? What action is taken? And that, that's it. You're not, obviously, you don't want to compromise the confidentiality of the meeting by explaining what happened. You want to just stick to what's required.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions?
I got a couple.
Commissioner Hoover?
Section three, three point six. This is in here a couple of times, actually, but it says, a commissioner who disqualifies him or herself from agenda item pursuant to the town code of ethics or for any other reason. Then it says should exit the meeting room and shall not participate in discussion. Well, certainly I disagree with that. I mean, it's a public meeting, so you really shouldn't have to exit the room. And if they signed up for public comments, they could do that. So they should not, but they definitely should not have to exit the meeting of a public meeting.
I've always seen a person who's disqualified themselves from participating in the conversation leave the meeting room.
But it's a public meeting, so why do they, why do they have to leave?
Well.
It's an open meeting to the public. They're a member of the public.
It is, but they've also, I mean, their, their comment on the issue to their fellow commissioners would, I, I think that might be a problem. The, the appearance of
I would lean to, to agree with the comment portion, but the portion of leaving the room, I, I disagree on. It is an open public meeting.
I do not think it's a problem, but I can look at it if you would like me to.
I would.
Do, do you think that has something to do with being an elected official? And when you become an elected official, you lose some of your rights. Does that make any sense?
I, I hear what you're saying and, you know, well, I might not necessarily phrase it that way exactly. I, I, I do think that that's a principle at, at play here. I don't, I certainly don't think. Well, let me put it this way. I can't think of a reason why that would be, it would be impermissible for you as a board to agree to have that in your rules. I don't think that it is required. So
Which part's not required? What do you mean?
The, the leaving. I don't think these rules have to say that the disqualified commissioner leaves. I don't think it's in, I don't think it is wrong for them to say that. I think it is a decision that you can make as a board either way. I, you know, my experience, I know I just, I was at a Thurmont meeting not long ago and a commissioner disqualified himself and he left the room. And I believe I have seen this in some other rules as well. So that's, that's all I can offer on that. And that's why I read it like that.
Mr. Hoover? I don't remember the time that I heard the conversation. I remember it was the idea that the, the office holder has the duties of office and therefore their communication sways the board. And therefore, by removing themselves, they eliminate communication, be it verbal communication or And therefore by removing themselves, they eliminate communication, be it verbal communication or, you know, the look or the body language or the coughing or whatnot to distract. So and, and again, I wish I could tell you where that came from, but I remember hearing it somewhere some time ago. So just a thought.
And that would, I, that's the principle that I'm, I'm thinking of.
So we've never done this before. I've never seen, when people have abstained before for a conflict of interest, I've never seen anyone here leave. So we're suggesting that if we were to abstain, then we then get up and leave the room and someone have to come get us?
Yes, as, as written, that would be.
It's a board decision.
I can, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I, I've always seen people abstain and then just sit there and not say anything. I haven't ever seen it as a problem of people with, are you, you're smiling at me like, yo. No, I'm just wondering, other feedback, what are your thoughts? Because this is a new-
It, it's always would come down to what he or she, why he or she is recusing themselves for, you know, how contentious of an item is it? You know, if it's just, I'm the person's neighbor or something, it may, it may or may not matter, but if, um, you know, I've got my hands in the pot somewhere, then maybe it matters.
If it, if it's a fiscal thing, like if someone stands to gain like money, then it's arguably in their best interest because if they're on the floor, so to speak, in our capacity, then that they might expose themselves to litigation for having undue influence in the process. So by removing oneself in that circumstance, there's a cutoff of communication. You know, the brow beating, the dirty looks, the coughing, besides, oh, my gosh, I can't believe that, you know, like people will comment at times. But if it's like a moral issue when a person abstains, like or it's an ethical issue in their mind, then I, I think there's sort of different tiers of it. So.
Sure, it's just easier to have bright line rules, I would say. And again, the, the thought here is just to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. So.
Okay, so that, yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I just wanted clarification because that would be a new procedure for us. Any other thoughts from the other commissioners? No? Okay. Commissioner Hoover, did you have, you said you had a few questions?
So then, let me see, let me come back to three eleven. Section five, five point three, it says that a quorum is not required for a workshop. I would think that we would want to, if we're going to meet, then we should meet as a quorum. It was again, back to my opinion.
It's your call again. Trying to make the, the intent behind writing it, the way that I did was to try to make workshops less formal. And obviously, if you're not transacting business, that is really the, the, the threshold issue for, for quorums. But if you want to require a quorum.
We, we may not be making motions to make, you know, actions or things, but we may be directing staff for certain things.
Potentially, yes.
And is, and is, and if there's only two people who are making that direction, there may be three to things otherwise or whatever. So to me, if you have the quorum, then you have, again, and also five point four, where it says the board need not prepare minutes for the workshop. I really would disagree with that.
That again reflects my, uh, my view of what needs to be included in minutes. But again, I hear you. It's your call.
Five point six is the same thing about shall exit the meeting room.
Yes. Agreed. I, I include that in there several times, so.
And, and five point seven, where it says the board shall not accept public comments. I would change it to a may, just as an option. We normally don't put, and we'd never have, we'd normally have not in the past, not to say we'd never have, but, but. To put it, they shout and says.
Sure, I get, my understanding was one of the fundamental things we were trying to achieve with the workshop was to dispense with the need for public comment.
To get down to business and get our whiff. That's what everybody would wish I would do. Back to three eleven, let me get back to that. So it says here, except as otherwise provided for the, for, except as otherwise provided for in these rules, Roberts Rules of Order revised shall control the proceeding of the board's meetings. I don't have an issue with that, other than the fact it would change some things because in Roberts Rules, and I see you have the book there, the Roberts Rules would then say, when you get to an agenda item, you would get a motion and a second before you go to discussion of that agenda item. No motion, no second, you don't, you would move on to the next agenda item.
I agree.
So, so the way we do business now, you do your discussion first, then you take a motion. And if, if everybody's going to abstain from it or not abstain, but if everybody's going to, nobody's going to motion, nobody's going to second, nobody's going to vote for it, then there was no reason to have a discussion to begin with. So it would be if we're going to accept Roberts Rules, one, that I think the council should then give from the town, the same book of Roberts Rules.
I agree. I think it would be, it would be helpful.
Page and understanding that, you know, at our next meeting, when we do an agenda item, first thing you would need is, if we're going to use Roberts Rules, is a motion. So it's just something that it would be some, it would be different. You know, we've tried that in the past and it's lasted for a little while and it fades back away the way it is now. It just, just as otherwise, that's the only thing three point eleven is. And we're, because of the code, is it the code or is it charter? It says there is no set rules, but president or the board can kind of set their own, which is what this, which is what this-
The board can set its own. Yeah, I think it might be in both, actually.
Put the, the opportunity for the board to do such.
That's right. Yeah. And I mean, really, the, the reference to Roberts Rules, it's really just, it's supposed to be a catchall, right? It's supposed to be something that for, um, an eventuality that I haven't spelled out here. If we really can't figure out what to do, we turn to Roberts Rules to consult, and that's the tiebreaker. But yes, I, I do agree with you that under Roberts Rules, motion, second, discussion, it's, there would be some, some tweaks.
It'd be different.
But it, it might also, the structure might help.
I would agree. That is all I have.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Turnquist?
Does any, to follow up on Jim's question, does anything that you added in three point ten in terms of how to make a dis- motion or, or follow up? Do any of those that you added conflict with Roberts Rules?
They do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I went through and I just pulled out certain Roberts Rules that I thought would be helpful, things that I've seen, you know, the times that I've been here, just to.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest and admit that I'd like to take more time to review this. I really haven't put a lot of time into reviewing it. You know, it's a lot of changes. I'm sure it's, it may be fine, but I'd like to review it further, especially after the comments that were made tonight.
Is, is this new or is this a revision of something already exist?
It's a revision of something that already exists. Yeah, that's, so again, the first thing that you see in the agenda packet is the red line, the red line comparison to the already extant.
Existing, okay, that's what I thought.
So Commissioner Turnquist, are, did you want to make a motion to the table? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think based on the questions tonight, that we're going to have to table it until some of those changes can be made. And and it sounds like Mr. Adams is going to look into a few of those things for clarification.
If, if you're asking me to, I mean, I, I certainly, I'm, I'm willing to. At, at this point, only Commissioner Hoover had asked me certain things. So I guess I would, I would be looking for either approval or table with instructions. And, and again, like I said, I'm, I'm happy and I, I did, I, I would want to go back over them one more time before I sit down. But I'm happy to look at all of those issues that Commissioner Hoover raised and either make a change or, or give additional context. But I, I just want to make sure I'm following my orders.
Well, as we discussed though, so what I, the, the questions I raised, I guess, at the end of the day, they come down to the, what does the board want you to do?
That's.
I give you my two, I gave you my two cents, but I'm only one of five.
Uh, that's, that's what I'm saying. Yes, respectfully.
Right.
I'll say it for you.
So other commissioners, we have Commissioner Hoover, who is, who has questions to be considered or changes to be considered. Feedback, agreement, thoughts?
I don't have a problem with table on it and to the, to us to look back into.
Okay.
Make a motion to table the item with direction to the attorney related to, Mr. Hoover, what were your numbers? If I could ask you if your numbers?
I'm sorry, but the only real follow that I have is the statement about leaving the room. That was the only, that was the only real thing that would, the rest was just more comments.
So with direction to review recusal? And Mr. Turnquist, was there anything that you wanted to include for direction to, to, uh, the attorney? No? Okay. And for verification, Mr. Adams, will that give you sufficient direction with the motion as it stands so far?
Yes, if, if the only thing that the board would like me to do is to confirm whether or not it is permissible to require a commissioner to leave the room upon recusal, I can do that.
The second item would be adding the scripted language, if we could please.
Yes, and I think that might be the, the main reason for doing this. Okay, yes.
So with that in mind, I'll conclude my motion. If it has clarity.
If I can just clarify a little bit more. When looking in for, is it permission, permissible to have somebody leave the room? Is it also permissible for someone not to leave the room but not comment? So like both ways. What, you know, but I, I heard both sides. I've just, if we're going to look at one, we might as well look at the other. And the other changes you suggested, Commissioner Hoover, is that something we want to consider or is not necessarily something we're taking?
I don't think the attorney needs to, I don't think Mr. Adams needs to.
But we can discuss those.
Review that. I mean, it's, it's, it's a discussion of this board to, you know, to, are you taking minutes? Is there a quorum and those kinds of things? That they're not necessarily legal issues. They're, they're more opinions.
Correct. So if you want to have those conversations now, you may. Or if you want to have those conversations when you're actually, since it's going to get tabled, now I'm going to do a couple of additional things. If you want to save that conversation for when the vote actually happens, you can.
That's fine. I mean, unless somebody else wants to, no, I think that's fine. And and Mayor Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we discuss months ago to somehow look at the order of our meetings and if we can somehow? Is this a typical order of the meetings per Roberts Rules? I know that there was some discussion about trying to get, put public comment at a different place because these-
You, this is, this is whatever you want it to be. You can move things around. Yeah, that, this is, this is the board's decision. Now, the, it does track other orders of business for other municipalities that I've, I've seen. You're not way off in left field, but yes, you have control over your order of business.
Okay, and that's certainly not something I'm looking at, at this time, but just down the road. If we feel like that the current order isn't working for us, but that's aside.
Yeah.
Okay, having said that, um.
Want to go another run?
Yes.
So with that in mind, I make a motion to table the agenda item number four with the addition of giving direction to the town attorney to further investigate and return to the board with information related to abstention, recusals and scripting language related to closed sessions. Sufficient.
Golden.
Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, on to this, agenda item number five, discussion to allow twenty-four hour parking as it relates to town code ten point twelve point zero nine zero. Commissioner Turnquist, I know you had requested this to be added to the agenda. Did you want to? Start us off?
Um, sure. So when we were looking at replacing meters on Main Street, we or I came across a code, an ordinance, ten dot twelve dot zero nine zero for two hour parking. It states it is unlawful for any person except persons to whom parking permits and parking signs have been granted to play stand or park for, to be on the street for more than two hours at any time. So basically on East and West Main Street where there are no meters, the ordinance says you are not to park there for more than two hours. And the town has, you know, not necessarily enforce the ordinance. So I suggested now that we've moved forward, forward with the approval of the parking meters, that we amend this ordinance. So we don't limit the parking on Main Street that's not metered to two hours. We remove that two hour parking time limit to make it in line with other streets in the town. So, I mean, I've looked at the code and I think we'd be okay just to strike that paragraph, ten dot twelve dot oh ninety. There's other codes already in effect for the town that limit parking to forty-eight hours. You have to move your car every forty-eight hours. So to have this rule apply only to Main Street doesn't make a lot of sense in my brain.
I did receive an email. I came in late today, commissioners that I forwarded along from Sheila Pittinger from the Total Look Salon, who in its essence thanking us for, first of all, replacing, upgrading the existing meters and leaving those open spots at the end of West Main. Since she does have older clientele who make use of those spots, it's been helpful. So that email is, should be in your inbox as well. Having stated that, I turn it over to any other commissioner who has comments or questions.
I do have one. The only problem with the, with the west end of town, I don't think it would matter too much. Only east end is the church, the churches. Because if you have twenty-four hour parking, they don't have any, hardly any parking in the back. So they, for church services, they have to use the main street for their service parking. And that's the only thing I could see that having less, more than two hour parking would hurt would be the churches. You know, the Presbyterian Church and Methodist Church up on West Main Street. They, they don't have hardly any parking in the back at all. Most of their parishioners park on the main
Although I didn't even, personally, I didn't know that there was a two hour parking limit in that area until it was brought up by Commissioner Turnquist. So I don't know to what extent this was even being enforced up until we said it.
Well, in, in the old days, there used to be a lot of businesses on that end of town. There was a grocery store, butcher shop, I think. In my town, there was well, his grocery store was on the corner. So people parked for there for the groceries and stuff. And there was some other, there's barber shops that were at the other end of, end of town. There were a lot more businesses when I guess with this ordinance was written.
I think some of our residents, the feedback we've received and we were talking about the parking meters to begin with, was that they did not, that that would become a hardship if we made that- That that would become a hardship if we made that two hour parking and essentially if we make that two hour parking, we might as well just have had. Parking meters in place anyway. So, um, that's something to consider.
I, I do agree. I mean, um, so we have not enforced this, this ordinance that I, that I know of ever. Um, so. The way, so we changed nothing. On the folks that are parking there now on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whatever. It's not gonna get any more or any less because. We're only changing the formality. We're not, you know, we're not changing the procedure really. The procedure is just, we've not been, it's not been enforced, so. The procedures are already in place. Uh, and it would continue to stay the same. Um, there's no, there's no regulation and on Sundays, there's no meter parking, so they'd be out there. Well over two hours on Sundays normally anyway. So after, after six P M on Saturday, they're gonna be there till. Six A M Monday probably, but, so I don't, I don't, I don't foresee that it being a. A hardship by us alternating the organs to, you know, and, and I think Commissioner Turnquist makes a good point. Just eliminate it from Main Street and just make it. Townwide two hour, uh, the, um, forty-eight hour parking. Um. And leave it, leave it at that, I believe. I think that's a good, good, a good way to go at it. Do not have Main Street to be, stand out, to be separate of what the rest of the town is.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
I'll just add briefly, I was really, um, surprised when I looked back at the code. Um, Federal Street and Broad Alley used to also be two hours. And that was stricken from the code in, uh, two thousand eighteen. Um, so at some point we've looked at this and it's been pared down to just Main Street. So I think to make Main Street and the residential areas on Main Street, you know, equivalent to the other streets in town. The other residential areas, you know, I, I think it's fair to remove this ordinance. I don't think it's the town's intent to start ticketing people that have been parked there longer for two hours.
And it's always something that could be revisited if the west end of Main Street turns into businesses. So it's not like whatever's decided tonight is set in stone forever. Additional thoughts? Okay. So. Is there? It's discussion only, so then you would have to direct staff. Oh, oh, yeah, it's discussion only. Thank you. Sorry about that. So, so.
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to direct staff to, uh, prepare an ordinance to it or, or draft a. Resolution, I guess, ordinance to resolution.
Ordinance.
It'd be ordinance, yes, because we're gonna modify it to, to prepare an ordinance to. Change the two hour parking on West Main, two hour parking on Main Street. To be consistent with the rest of the town for forty-eight hours.
In the unme.
Should it be just consensus and not a motion? Or does it matter? Does it matter since this discussion item? I mean, I know what I'm supposed to do.
Okay. So we're making a motion. Yes.
I'll second it.
Second. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Uh, motion carries five to zero. Okay. That concludes. Our agenda items. So this time we're looking at setting the agenda for March, well, actually. I guess we're setting the agenda for two different meetings because we're turning February twelfth into. A meeting, correct?
I would just have it as a special meeting. And you can still do your setting priorities. Um, I highly doubt that I have those two additional items ready for February twelfth. It'd be more like March. So we will need a closed session following the February twelfth meeting.
Correct.
To me, I would just handle it, okay.
I was also just going to volunteer myself that I've, if it would be helpful to move things along, I can have the rules ready. For round two by the twelfth, just if, if you're converting this into a, right, special meeting.
I'm fine with that. Commissioners, anybody's have an objection to that? Commissioner Donald?
The current rule still applied. So it's just an amendment, so.
I'd just be interested to hear what staff had to say. I, I think the, in respect to the preparation that might be.
Mr. Adams has prepared all of this. It, it, staff would be fine with it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Um, so we'll go ahead and set the agenda for March fourth.
So your February twelfth meeting, you would have, um. For consideration approval of the updated rules of procedure for Board of Commissioner meetings to include provisions for closed meetings and workshops, et cetera. And then your item number two. Would be, um, for consideration, setting priorities. For the town.
Okay. I assume within the priorities for the town, we could also bring up Cedar, Cedar Avenue and Seaton flooding, or does that need to be a separate item?
I would, um, I think that would be a priority.
Okay.
Added.
All right, thank you.
Or discuss, excuse me.
Okay. Do we need to vote to accept?
Yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Is there, are there, well, first of all, commissioners, anything additional for February twelfth? Or is there a motion to accept the February twelfth agenda as stated?
You make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Um, setting the agenda for March fourth.
What I have would be, uh, the first agenda item would be the F Y twenty-three audit presentation. By our auditors. Second would be for consideration, approval of bid for the DePaul Street water line. Number three, for consideration approval of the bid for three year trash service. Number four, for consideration approval of the prefab restroom and concession stand building in E D Eugene Myers Park. For admin business presentation by Gary Castillo on his proposed National Civil War Monument project. I have two tentative items that I'd like to go ahead and add. Um, with the understanding that they might be withdrawn. Um, for consideration approval of estimate for the backwash project at the water treatment plant. And final, the next one be for consideration of, um. For consideration approval of the change order for the pump station project.
We didn't want to add that to February twelfth.
I don't, I won't have, I, I have nothing came across my desk yet, so I don't anticipate having it in time.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Any.
Will we need to add the Community Legacy Grant application discussion to the March fourth agenda? Hmm, that won't be, the application isn't due for community legacy till June?
Yes, June.
Well, but I mean, the applications that were just received, I think you said you had eight.
Yes, that'll go before the Sustainable Communities Work Group. I believe they've set, I don't know if they've set a meeting date yet or not.
Okay, so it won't circle back around to us.
No, no, it's the separate border, uh, separate, separate committee that approves those and. I think they're shooting for February twentieth at seven P M, but I don't believe we've heard confirmations yet. Okay.
It's twenty administrative.
I think the. Administrator shared, there's only three that she mentioned. The, did you get those down?
I had seven agenda item.
There were three for administrative, correct, Ms. Willetts?
I had just one.
Oh, geez.
Presentation by Gary Castillo on his proposed National Civil War Monument. Those are the other two, I'm sorry, those last two would be actual agenda items, so they would be, uh, five and six.
Thank you, sorry. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda for March fourth as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
What did I, did I miss something? No, second. All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any against? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. All right, so that brings us, we do, do we have anything? We don't have anything to sign tonight? I don't, or do we?
No.
No, okay.
When do we have to notify about the closed session?
You can make the announcement now and vote that you'll go in a closed session at the February twelfth meeting, is that correct?
If we know that a closed session is going to be required for February twelfth, then yes.
Okay, yes, we do. So, um, we can go ahead and vote to close the February twelfth.
Well, we, we don't vote to close it now.
Well, no, vote to set the, yeah, okay, that's what I meant.
To announce it.
Right, correct.
So, so what, what we're looking for is.
Motion to.
A- adding to the February twelfth agenda, a proposed closed session.
For the purposes of hiring.
The employment exception.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'd have to go back and revote.
No, you're saying.
We're just adding it, okay. All right, so we can go ahead and adjourn? No.
Make, make a, make a motion to amend the February twelfth agenda to add a closed session. Pursuant to Maryland's Code Annotated General Provision. Three dash three oh five B one.
Yes. Listen to your town clerk right there. B one.
Is the employment exception, I believe.
B one. That's correct.
I make a motion so described.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Now can we adjourn?
One question, I just want to know why, uh, that side of the board is wearing burgundy and this side's wearing black. Just wondering.
Because we got the memo.
Yeah, we, I was gonna say.
From the pool kids.
That's an Open Meetings Act violation.
You didn't get the memo.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Um, all in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at nine oh three. According to my phone is nine oh three P M.